Legions, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 26th County Commission Meeting. I'll remind everybody to silence their cellphones if they have those, and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over here. And if you do need a listening device, you can contact Robert, front row, blue shirt. So with that, we'll start with the routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of March 19th, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $861,099.48.
Pay the bills.
Second.
With comment?
Mr. Chair, the bills today include just over $200,000 for software and IT and in the jail.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments? If not, those in favor approving the bills signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. Item five is to approve the routine personnel action.
I'll move routine action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is application for abatement. Kyle Helseth.
Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helseth, Equalization Office. We bring before you this morning two requests for abatement. The first one being from Douglas Biltman, record ID 78010, for 2011 taxes in the amount of $803.04. This is on an owner-occupied difference.
Make the motion.
Checkup. Any questions for Kyle?
I have a question.
Mr. Barth?
How do we go back to 2011? Those were payable in 2012, right?
He had. It's a refund.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle? We have a motion and a second to approve ID 7801. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We'll go to item B.
Item B is for Francisco Madrigal, record ID 53727. This is also an owner-occupied problem that was corrected, and he's asking for an abatement on his 2011-2012 property taxes in the amount of $861.84.
Motion to approve.
Say it.
Do we have any questions for Kyle? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve ID 53727. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning, Pam Helseth, the Treasurer's Office. And I have five abatements. They're all for the purposes of the elderly freeze. The people are all well into their 80s. I have ID number 46251 for the amount of $327.22. I have ID 45042 for the amount of $1,076.22. I have ID 40805 for $603.86. And I have ID number 33189 for $816.82. And I have ID number 40453 for $135.60.
Thank you, Pam. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Pam?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barth?
It's really not about these particular ones, but Pam, the official deadline for filing that stuff is like now, right?
It's Friday at 5:00.
So...
But we will take postmarked stuff, so...
And oftentimes, people forget that they have to do this every year, and so they may not qualify every year as well. But the deadline is this Friday, is that...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And there was a nice story in the paper about it on Sunday as well.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve items C through G. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item seven are notices and requests. A notice from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources of guidelines and procedures for South Dakota's abandoned underground tank removal program has been received.
Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lane today. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
If anyone has any public comments on any item that is not on the agenda, we would take those now, otherwise we'll move on to the agenda items. No movement, so we'll move to the next item.
Regular business. Item 10 is consider appeal of a decision by the Minnehaw County Human Services to deny rental assistance on case number 50695. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have before you, and Doug Cummings is here today representing the client. They have requested an appeal for this client who's been denied financial services by Minnehaw County Human Services. Minnehaw County Human Service guidelines state that a client can request a review, which was done by Jamie Phelps, our emergency relief supervisor, and if denied, can request an appeal with the Minnehaw County Commission.
Carol, can you move the microphone a little closer?
A little closer? Is that better?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The client claims she has, she now has two children in the home rather than one, so the over-income denial is no longer valid. The original application noted one child in the home. However, the caseworker also denied the request for motel based on other resources and that the county does not supplement these resources. And the client has asked for a couple weeks in a motel. Doug from East River Legal Services has represented her on the landlord/tenant issue as well as the case review. She has struggled, she's living with a boyfriend at his relative's home. She advised the caseworker that she was struggling feeding the family and gets SNAP, which is food stamps of $69 a month. There are no cooking facilities as a motel, whereas UGM, the Women and Children Building, would provide food and staff support as well. And the client was recently paid $1,450 in SSDI/SS benefits and child support. Client stated that she is moving to Arizona State by her family as soon as Sioux Falls Housing makes the decision on whether or not she gets the low-income housing voucher back. And just as a note for the Commissioners, low-income housing vouchers are able to be transferred from one state to another state. She could have used the SSDI/SS child support she was recently paid to this month to pay for a motel room this month, but she reportedly has been staying with family and friends. She could also utilize UGM Women and Children's Building for free temporary emergency housing, and they would help with food and have support staff as well. So the denial was based upon other resources. If the client does not continue to stay with family, friends, then UGM Women and Children Shelter is available for temporary emergency housing placement, and this will meet the food needs as well. The county guidelines also state that the county does not supplement SSDI or other forms of government assistance where other resources are available. And in the memo that I prepared for you, for the Commissioners, I did include those guidelines at the bottom of that. And also, the clarification on the federal poverty standards, because with three people, she would be under income; with two, she was over, just so we have clarification on that. Any questions I can answer for you before you have a chance to talk to Doug Cummings?
Any questions for Carol on this case? Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
My client, Tricia Hare, is a single mother...
Doug, would you identify yourself and give your address?
Okay, I'm Doug Cummings, lawyer with East River Legal Services. I represented Tricia Hare, who is the appellant.
The policy of the Commission is not to use names in these cases, so please continue, but we'd prefer that you don't do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
My client is a single mother of two elementary-age schoolchildren. She has an autoimmune deficiency which requires her to go to Mayo Clinic for treatment several times a year, and when she goes, she stays for several days. She lives on $878 a month in Social Security disability and receives about $400 a month in child support. Sometime in late January, early February, she was at Mayo for several days. When she returned home to her subsidized apartment, I think it's a townhome, the pipes had burst, and it was flooded, so the place was uninhabitable. The landlord refused to pay to put her up in another place. She used what she had left of her own money to put herself and her children in a motel for a week, and then came to our office, and then came to our office when she was served with eviction papers, because she was unable to pay her share of the rent of $100. HUD subsidizes the rest of it through Sioux Falls Housing, that Section 8 voucher. We then went to county for some temporary assistance, which was denied, and I later found out it was denied because they made an air thinking she had one child with her, when she in fact had two children with her. We tried to work things out with the landlord. We came to an agreement on the eviction case and just agreed to mutually terminate the lease with the understanding that she would be able to take her Section 8 voucher with her, because it was a mutual termination of the lease. To find out later that HUD has now changed its rules, and if the tenant owes any money to the landlord for back rent, utilities, et cetera, the voucher cannot be used until that is paid. So we appealed to Sioux Falls Housing. We had a hearing on that. They've yet to render a decision. We're hoping this week we would get one. So we reapplied for temporary assistance to the county. The county at some point negotiated, or attempted to negotiate with the landlord, to pay the back rent, but that would not have solved the problem, because the place was still uninhabitable because of this flooding. The landlord basically decided to go in and gut the place because of the flooding and the other damage, and it needed other work anyway. So the place was uninhabitable during all of this period of time. There was no place for her to go. So we had a hearing in front of Sioux Falls Housing, which is similar to what the county does, arguing that, number one, the law in South Dakota allows a tenant to leave and not owe any further rent if a place becomes uninhabitable through no fault of their own, and number two, that the lease had been mutually terminated by agreement, and we're waiting a decision on that. In the meantime, we went back to county for temporary assistance. My client was told that she was ineligible, although eligible income-wise, she was ineligible because she failed to use private nonprofit resources, which the county feels relieves them of their legal responsibility to provide help for the poor. Now remember, we're not asking for anything permanent or anything long-term. We're asking for a decent place for this woman to stay pending this decision by Sioux Falls Housing, which we should get shortly, and we've been waiting already over a week for it. But I understand some of the, well, the director and deputy director have been out of town, and they need to make the final decision on this, so that's the reason it hasn't been made. My main concern about this decision is, number one, I feel my client is exactly the type of person that should be getting help from the county human resources. My second concern about it is the county using private nonprofit agencies who have very limited funds to relieve themselves of their legal responsibility to help the poor. I do not believe it's legally correct for the county to say, "You haven't gone to Salvation Army, you haven't gone to community outreach, you haven't gone to the mission before we will help you." If you go to those agencies, they tell our clients the same thing. Go to the county first, and then, if they can't help you, we will try to help you. But these agencies do not provide the same services that the county does. For example, some of them will not provide money for temporary rent or assistance. Some of them will provide only utility assistance. Some of them will provide other types of assistance, but they provide very limited assistance, because they are very limited in terms of being a nonprofit. The other issue about the mission, I suggest that some of you folks tour the mission and look at what this would be if you take your children there. Now, an adult who's got a problem, I have no problem with that. That's what the mission is for. It's temporary, and can sometimes, in some cases, with our clients, provide some motivation to figure out another place to go. But to ask a single mom with two young children who are in school to take her children to live at the mission, because the county decides they come first before the county should help, I think is wrong. I think it's wrong legally, and I think it's wrong morally. So our appeal is that the other resources rule is being misused here and misinterpreted, and I think the county's responsibility to someone like my client would come before sending her to the mission, the Salvation Army, or community outreach.
Thank you, Doug. I think you might want to stay at the mic just for a minute, because I'm sure there's questions. Commissioner Kelly?
Mr. Cummings, you said tour the Gospel Mission, and I have. They have a separate floor, I believe it's the third floor, that's for the women with children. I mean, she's, it's not in with a bunch of other people. She's in with the women that have children, if I believe. And I guess the only thing I take objection for is you are saying the government should solve all these problems, and the nonprofits, which are established for that very purpose, should not.
Well, what you're describing to me, Commissioner, is a legislative problem.
Well, it's a moral problem.
The law in South Dakota is clear that counties have a responsibility to help the poor and to give them assistance when they are in need. And for someone in need to come to that county who has a legal responsibility, ask for the very assistance that the law says the county must provide, to say, "No, you go to a private agency before you come to us," I think is wrong under the law. I'm not going to argue, you know, philosophy in terms of how this is. Unfortunately, in South Dakota, this is the way the code is written. This is how it's done. Everything flows down to the bottom, and the responsibilities are dumped on the counties, rightly or wrongly. But I hear what you're saying, and I understand the concerns about government being involved, but in this case, the law says government should be allowed. And I'm saying that if the law says the government should be involved, then when people, the county does have the right to decide its own eligibility requirements. That's true. But it has to be according to the statutory scheme. And what I'm saying is, when a county takes a position that, "We don't have to help anybody until they go to all possible resources, private or public," I think that's a wrong interpretation of the law. If I were to agree with you on not having government involved, then that would require the legislature to change the law and for the state or other entities to be involved in some of these problems. My client, as I said, I think is exactly the kind of person who needs some temporary assistance. This happened through no fault of her own. I mean, the landlord thinks it's her fault, because her pipes burst when she was out of town, but that's another argument. She has two small children. She is disabled, so she has limited options income-wise. She used her own resources, meaning what she had left of her own money, to put her family up temporarily, and was only asking the county to supplement that temporarily while she was waiting to get her voucher approved, so that she could port it to another city, preferably Rochester is what she's looking at, so she can be closer to the Mayo Clinic, so she won't have this problem in the future. So I see my client is doing everything possible that she could do to try to help her situation, and that her request to the county is a temporary request based on circumstances, not her fault, and based on a legal system that says the county has this responsibility.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Just a little follow-up. Does the law say the county is primary, or does the law say we are obligated to take care of them after all other means have been exhausted?
The law just simply says the county has a responsibility to help needy individuals. It also says the county can set up, take into consideration other government help from other agencies, and set up its own eligibility requirements, which this county has done. This county has an elaborate eligibility and regulations, which is probably the best of any county in the state, has appeal procedures, probably the best of any county in the state, and has, the only issue I have with the county is, I don't believe that the system is set up so that the county can tell people to go to private agencies before they take their responsibility. I think it should be the opposite.
That's an interpretation question, right?
I think when someone comes to the county, and the county offers or gives what they can give under their guidelines, or says, "You don't meet our guidelines," then these people would go to Salvation Army, Community Outreach, or the mission.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Other questions for Mr. Cummings? Thank you.
Thanks.
Carol, do you have any rebuttal or any other comments to Mr. Cummings' comments?
No, nothing specific that's out there. And I certainly understand and respect the concerns that he has. You have your guidelines that we've developed, and the guidelines that we've utilized have always said were of last resort that is out there. So, and for our process, every time somebody comes into our office, whether we say yes, no, we're pending, whatever it is that's out there, people always receive a notice of action, and NOA is what we refer to. And we do work very cooperatively with the other nonprofits out there, because they know when somebody comes in, they'll say, "Show me your NOA," because then they'll understand exactly what we've denied, what we've said yes to, what we've said no to, in order to be on there. So the client did receive a referral to Community Outreach for gas, I believe, is what was in the notice of assistance, because that's, they receive separate funding for doing that particular process.
Any questions for Carol? Commissioner Barth?
So Carol, in this case, did the client meet our income requirements for assistance?
Let me just take you through that little bit of confusion. When she first came in, she filled out the application, and the application stated that she and a child in the house. And in that particular, let me get the notes in front of me. In that particular conversation, the guidelines for us, and the guidelines for reference are the federal poverty levels. For two people, it was $1,293 a month. After everything was finished that was out there, then she then stated, "No, I actually have two children in the household," which was then added to the application, but it was not on the original application. And at that point, the funding would go up to $1,628, would be the monthly amount, for an annual amount of $16,530. So that was the confusion over that. So, but with the two children in the household, she would be just under guidelines, under that. We do have, you know, unfortunately, this is something our staff deals with, to be honest, on a very daily basis that is out there. Are there times that we will put somebody up in a hotel instead of using one of the other private nonprofits in town? Absolutely. For instance, one of the circumstances is that if the children are old enough that you've got a 13, 14, 15-year-old child of the opposite sex of the parent, that if you've got a mom with a 15-year-old child, or a father with a 15-year-old, with a daughter, they're going to be split up into separate places, and they aren't going to be able to stay together. That's a circumstance where we would go through and see a motel as being a better alternative for them.
Other comments or questions for Carol? Commissioner Heiberg?
Just a comment. I spent two years learning Carol's job, sort of, and it has been our policy, and I learned that from day one, that we use other resources. If we didn't use the other resources in the county, it would cost us a whole lot more, and we'd be serving a whole lot less people. We do work collaboratively with our neighbors.
Other questions? If not, I have a question for Mr. Cummings, or a couple, if you will.
Sure.
Do you have any reason why, when the original application was done, she first said she had one child, and then changed it to two?
I think it was just confusion. I mean, if you met my client, she talks very fast, and she's very stressed, and she sometimes talks over herself. I think there was just confusion between the worker and the person taking the application. I mean, I discovered the, when I saw she'd been denied for income, and I looked at our application, we use similar guidelines, although ours are a little higher. I called, I can't remember who I talked to at county, and said, "Why is she over income guidelines? Is there a problem with her?" And then I discovered that they had her down as one, not two. I said, "Well, she has two kids at home. Did you not know that?" "Well, no." Because, you know, and he said, "Well, I'll get back to you on any call," and said, "Well, I think she said that on her old application. We used the old application," or I don't know what it was. But there was a confusion there on the application process.
Okay. Thank you. The other piece that I read in the notes, I think, is there was some question about when she was evicted, there was some negligence...
Alleged by the landlord.
Disgust, alleged, if you will, about the windows being left open, and that's why the pipes froze, or something.
We do a considerable amount of landlord/tenant work at my office. I have never had a landlord who didn't say whatever damage was left was done by a tenant. And my client denies that.
Okay.
You know, and one of the problems when the county tried to negotiate for her was that the landlord said, "Yeah, I want $1,400 and whatever to cover my insurance deductible and copays," before there was any proof as to why the pipes burst.
Okay.
Because there was also a maintenance man who said he was in the place the same day she returned, a few hours before, and there was no bursting or flooding. So I guess the point is, we don't know why pipes burst. Usually, they burst because it's too cold or whatever, but I can't tell you.
Okay.
But to prove that would be, who knows?
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions, comments from anyone, audience, or from the Commissioners? Commissioner Barth?
For Carol, a question.
Certainly.
So Carol, by the newer data, there with two children, her income is below that number, so she would normally qualify for assistance, right?
Well, there's one except, one in our guidelines, which we bring, and they always have not changed since I've been at the county. The guidelines state that if somebody receives a Social Security check or disability check, that type of thing, that, let me get the right language out for you, the back of the memo I copied that onto. Obligation in the presence of public assistance. The county shall consider all other forms of public assistance benefits, federal and state, in determining eligibility. The receipt of federal, state, or other assistant funds, such as but not limited to Social Security, may be considered satisfaction in whole of the county's obligation under SDCL 28-13. So typically, if somebody receives that Social Security check, we don't subsidize them also through additional tax dollars.
Okay.
Could I make a comment on that also?
Certainly.
See, that's, I have a big problem with that also.
Doug, I'll have you start over when you get to the mic.
Okay.
We don't pick up everything in the audience.
My problem with that policy is that if you have a part-time job, and you're making $878 a month, then you get help from the county. If you get a Social Security check for $878 a month, then you don't. And what's the rational basis for that? There isn't one. It's just another way to make, I, look, I have, I'm sensitive to the county's problems with the amount of money you spend on this, and you're the biggest county in the state, and you're, because of the way we're growing, we're growing in every facet, including the poor population. So I understand all of that. But I'm just saying that this particular situation, and if I didn't understand it, you'd see me here a lot more, and you don't. I think this particular situation cries out for some assistance under these circumstances. And to say that, because you get a check from Social Security and you're disabled through no fault of your own, because you're not working and making the same amount of money, you can't get help, or because you could take your children to the mission and live in a dorm, whatever, and then get them to school, they're enrolled in school, which is another issue, that you shouldn't, you know, you should have to take their help first and not help them, is contrary to what county poor relief is about, if you read the whole section of the law there. So really, that's my position. And I just have problems with the county interpreting their responsibility by using things like Social Security disability. I don't have a problem taking it into consideration, but if you still don't get enough money through disability to make it to the poverty level, then that should qualify you for help from somebody. And she's getting the help she can get. She's used her own resources. She went to the places that she could go to, and I think she should have been helped. It's just that simple.
Thank you. You're a nice guy, but we like to see you infrequently. Other questions for either? Carol, please.
Just to follow up to Doug's comment, and I would agree with you, is that nobody's going to get rich off Social Security or disability payments that are out there. But typically, if you do have those, then you probably have Medicare or Medicaid that comes along with it. You've gotten into the system, so you probably have food stamps and low-income housing that goes along into it also. So, and that's part of the recognition that goes into it. And unfortunately, there are a lot of people who either fall into that category of very low income, whether they receive government assistance or whether they're working.
Thank you. Commissioner Pecas?
I'm going to float a motion. I don't know if I'll get a second, but I'm going to make a motion to defer this until there's been a determination from HUD as to whether or not the voucher is going to be transferable.
Is there a second to Commissioner Pecas's motion? Dies for a lack of a second. Any other motions or comments? If I might, Kirsten, go ahead. Commissioner Kelly?
I'll make a motion to deny the request.
A second.
We have a motion to deny the request? Other comments?
I would like to make comments, but go ahead and ask your question, Kirsten.
I was going to ask Kirsten for his legal opinion on this particular statute. I think that's really the bottom line for all this conversation, so if you would, please.
Thank you. I guess this does come down to an issue of interpreting our county policy as whether that's consistent with statute. As I understand it, and I can refer you to statute 20... As I understand it, and I can refer you to statute 28-1-18, and that addresses duplication of public assistance and exhaustion of other sources of assistance. And part of the text of that statute, if I may, says, "No person is eligible for any assistance or services from the state of South Dakota, or its agencies, or subdivisions," which we are, "until that person has exhausted all other sources of assistance or services available to the person, or for which the person would be eligible if the person applied in the list of entities mentioned in that statute." It does mention private entities.
That's right. Okay.
So, I believe, it's my legal opinion, that the county's policy is consistent with that statute.
Thank you.
Yeah, comment?
I'm sorry, Dick. Commissioner Kelly?
Just in defense of my motion, even at Safe House, which these guys are the poorest of the poor, if they have an income source such as social security, or SSI, or something like that, we do charge them a rent based on their income. So, you know, it might only be $50 or $100 a month, but they do have an obligation, but they've got some income resources. It states in our policy that the county assistance shall be a resource of last resort, and it goes on. But I, you know, I disagree that we shouldn't look to the nonprofits, the churches, and the other kind of aid to people. And then if they can't, if it's all gone there, then yes, we're obligated to pay it or support it. But this lady has got a reasonably, not good income, but I mean, she's, you'll notice in the comments, she has several sources with SSI, and SNAP, and CS, which I don't know what that is, that's $400 a month. So, I just, you know, I would defend Union Gospel. They're doing a terrific mission for this town, taking care of a lot of people on a temporary basis, and that's what they're there for. And I think it's a nice facility, considering what we're doing. The Gospel mission takes no government funds, to my knowledge, and I think that's the way this country was built and should continue.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, and other comments? Commissioner Barth?
I would say I'm very sympathetic with the person in this case and her family. At the same time, I would say, this county does subsidize some of these non-governmental organizations, which step in and do work that we would otherwise have to start a whole new department to do ourselves. So, sharing the burden with them does not seem out of the ordinary to me, because, again, we do work with many of these. Having served on the homeless advisory board, I can tell you that there are a dozen or more groups that work on this type of issue, and many of them get some assistance from the county.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Pecas?
Well, Mr. Cummings is right, and Mr. Cummings is wrong, because you're absolutely right, Kirsten, when you read 28-1-18, it does specifically list private entities under the state statute. And one of the things, in the briefing memo, or at least that the facts is renditioned by Mr. Cummings, indicated that currently under HUD, we don't have a decision yet related to the voucher. And if she gets the voucher, then she's exercised and gotten some more benefits under 28-1-18, which then would free up a little bit of money, and I think she intends to relocate to Phoenix and get out of Sioux Falls. That exercising of those benefits actually would keep her, I believe, out of the purview of Minnehaw County being in the service of providing to the poorest of the poor those benefits. If that voucher is denied, then she doesn't have access to those particular funds. And so, one of my ideas regarding deferring this is that if she's denied, then we look at the possibility of trying to see if she qualifies for those benefits, because then she will have exhausted all of her benefits. At this point, at least from the rendition of the facts from Mr. Cummings, this is her last potential remedy that she's trying to exhaust right now. Now, I may be wrong, but there's also a potential appeal process that she can bring out of this particular hearing as well. But I know he's trying to exhaust all the remedies, but in looking at state statute, and looking at the appeal that's over at HUD, I think that it would be mindful on the part of this commission to take that into consideration. If she is denied, then she really is upstream without a paddle. And I just want to make sure that this county goes on the record to understanding the plight of some of our constituents, and that we do acknowledge that. But I understand that you should be getting a decision by the end of the week, but if the will of the commission is just to deny this at this point, I'm sure Mr. Cummings can take it to the next level as well, and maybe she will get that voucher and be able to relocate to, down to Phoenix, where she has some other support systems available.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth, are you going?
I'm just going to say, I don't plan to support it at this time. I'm not sure what the correct solution is, but I just have a hard time denying it at this time.
Well, I'm going to take a second for chair privilege, because I can do that, I think, without getting kicked out of here. I agree with John. I think we, one week, wouldn't make a big difference, and that would make a big difference in her life. Frankly, I would have supported Mr. Cummings's action until I read, or didn't read, but heard Kirsten read 28-1-18, which I think is clear where the county's responsibilities are, and we have to follow law. That's what we were all sworn in to do. I think waiting a week would have been a better option, but I hope that you understand that, frankly, this is one of those most sensitive things that county has to deal with, and unfortunately, this particular individual is in some real difficult circumstances, and hopefully, she'll come to some conclusion that'll help her with her long-range goal of becoming independent. With that, we have a motion and a second, I believe. Roll call. To deny the request, and we will go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecas?
No.
Venega?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd move to defer for a week.
Oh, second.
For some reason, I had that gut feeling that would happen.
Roll call vote.
We have a motion and a second to defer for a week. Those...
I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to say...
I thought you were ready.
I'm never ready.
Commissioner Barth?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Pecas?
Yes.
Venega?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings, you have one week to solve this problem.
Gee whiz, thanks. I'll need to talk to you next week.
We were kidding, and we said we didn't really want to see you regularly, so I think we go to item number 11.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with JSA Engineering and Land Surveyors for preliminary engineering, plan preparation, and bidding for concrete pavement restoration, and joint repair on Minnehaw County Highway 142 between Powderhouse Road and South Dakota Highway 11. D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, highway superintendent. This agreement is the first agreement for a project that we have, that was discussed two weeks ago, that wasn't on the original approved budget for 2013. This project was identified because of severe maintenance needs that are needed on Powderhouse or on South Dakota 142. 142 is commonly referred to as Madison Street, as it leaves Sioux Falls and goes over towards Brandon. It's inside the city limits of Sioux Falls, it is Madison Street. So, I think we're all pretty familiar with that area. It is pretty rough, and the last couple of years has had some pretty bad frost heaved problems and significant deterioration in concrete pavement. So, we're hoping to do a repair project on that this year. The city of Sioux Falls has advised us on ways to approach this project, and they have used JSA engineers for a couple of projects in the last couple of years, and they've done a pretty good job for them. And so, we're hoping that we can hire them to prepare plans and specs for us and get that project rolling. So, if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any questions for D.J.?
So, this was not a RFP or bid deal?
No, this was, we didn't do an RFP.
What's the cap? And once again...
Okay, the contract for professional services is $25,100.
Yeah.
And become professional service.
What's the level at which we have to go out for?
There is no statutory requirement.
None? Okay, thank you. Totally, no.
This area, because it's considered professional services, there is not an RFP or bid requirement on this. We're bringing it to you because your county policy does state that contracts of this amount need to be approved by the commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Other questions for D.J.? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and Saab Buster's Radio Control Model Airplane Club. D.J. Boothby.
Morning again, Commissioners. As you have approved in the past, Saab Buster's is requesting another formal agreement to utilize the gravel pit property as a location to operate motor airplanes with their club. And they have a pretty nice setup over there that they've been using for several years. And this current agreement, we have changed from the previous four-year term to a two-year term, and that was at the request of the commission office, and the department supports that. We think that they make pretty good neighbors over there, and we have had zero issues whatsoever. So, we support the agreement the way that it is written. I know that they do have representatives here that they may wish to make a request to modify the term of the agreement, but as far as the agreement goes, if you have any questions, I can answer them, or if you would like them to speak, that's okay, too.
Any questions for D.J.? If not, if there's someone here from the group that would like to make any comments or respond to the revision, that would be great. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kurt Anderson, president of the Saab Buster Club.
Kurt, we need your address, too, I'm sorry.
My personal address?
You can give us whatever address you want.
All right.
We'll find you wherever you are.
I live at 6512 West 52nd Street.
Okay.
In Sioux Falls. And I'd like to thank the county for letting us use that land. We've used it for several years, and we have 35 active members who fly off it year-round. And I guess the only change I'd like to ask is to go from a two back to a four-year agreement, just to save the time of doing this. Every two years, it can be canceled at 60 days on either party, if it needs to be canceled. But otherwise, we really appreciate using that land, and we maintain it, we mow it, and do weed control, and we have a fun fly once a year.
Thank you.
That's all I have for comments.
Thank you, Kurt. Commissioner Kelly?
I don't know if it's indicated. I'm guessing that the reason for the shorter term is we're still in the process of trying to figure out where the highway building is going to possibly be relocated, and so we don't really want to go out four years on anything, just in case. That was one of the sites originally considered. It hasn't been in the top number, but I think that's probably the primary reason for the two-year. I don't think you're going to have a problem getting it approved.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm just wondering if there's a clause in here that says we can break the contract in 60 days. Why does it matter if it's two to four? There must have been a reason. Anybody want to speak to that?
Sidney, it's my understanding that the commission was just uncomfortable with the long-term contracts in general, and that was the reason that the four-year got changed to a two. I mean, because of the clause, we'd be okay with a ten-year. We don't have any issue with them being out there.
Commissioner Barth?
Does the state's attorney have any opinion on that?
As long as that 60-day mutual cancel provision is in there, really, there's no difficulties presented by a longer term. But I believe maybe the intent was just to have these contracts brought more regularly before you, just out of an awareness point of view as to what's out there and what's binding us. That's my understanding of why we reduce those terms.
Commissioner Kelly? I'd move to accept the agreement as written, or as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion dies for a lack of a second. Commissioner Barth?
I move to amend the agreement to four years and approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agreement to four years. We'll vote, do we have to vote on the amendment first?
There's no amendment.
Not really? Just a change?
It's just a new motion.
Just a motion?
Yep.
I think you can fly by every four years and drop the contract off.
Remotely.
Yep, we have...
No drones.
We have a motion for four-year, I think I lost control. We have a four-year agreement with the group, the Saab Buster's Radio Control Airplane Club. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, so we'll see you in four years.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience, too.
Item number 13 is consider a motion to concur with recommendation of the chairman to appoint Dick Kelly to the Minnehaw County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a five-year term. Robert Wilson.
Morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the commission office. The county Housing and Redevelopment Commission was created by a resolution of this commission back in February of 2010, and the Housing and Redevelopment Commission is the limited partner in the Safe Home Limited Partner. The Safe Home LP is the legal owner of the facility that, excuse me, that the Safe Home program operates out of, up at Third and Minnesota. Just a little bit of background, this ownership structure was required as part of the construction financing package using low-income housing tax credits. So, that's the reason that this group was created and is needed. The resolution creating the five-member board set initial terms of the five members at staggered lengths, one year, two years, three years, and four years. Commissioner Kelly, who serves as chairman of the HRC, was elected or appointed with a three-year term. So, his term is up this year. Moving forward, all future terms will be for a period of five years. And the process is appointment by the commission chair with concurrence by the rest of the commission. And so, that's what we have before you this morning, asking for concurrence with the chairman's recommendation to reappoint Commissioner Kelly for a new five-year term on the HRC.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions of Robert? Or a motion to approve Commissioner Kelly to a five-year term?
Given the fact that he's not here, I say I'll make a motion to appoint him.
A second. We have a motion and a second. He's out there roaming the halls, so...
He's close enough.
Yeah, he's close enough.
He did say for the record, he thought he should step down.
I agree. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Put a note that Commissioner Kelly abstained. It's a heck of a pay increase.
We kind of appointed him to more stuff while he was gone.
Yeah, that's true.
Item number 14 is a briefing on proposed changes to long-range planning process and annual budget process provisions in Minnehaw County Policy and Procedure Manual. Ken McCollum.
Last year, during the budget hearing processes, the commission had requested that we take a look at some potential changes, and fairly minor ones, I would say, about how we start to prepare you for budget hearings. And so, and as you know, we do have, we do have in our county policies and procedures manual, a section that talks about preparation of the annual budget and our long-range planning process. Again, I would remind you, last year, you really focused on two, or on four things. Number one, you wanted to bring some consistency to how department heads submit their long-range plan information. You're also looking for an earlier time when we could start looking at revenue estimates for the upcoming budget year. You also talked about a new format to the application that outside agencies use and submit to the county when they're requesting funds from the county. And you also wanted to establish a formal process and an established procedure on how you review the salaries for the elected officials. you review the salaries for the elected officials. And that's particularly important because, number one, elected officials don't get step increases like every other person in the county. And so you wanted to establish, you know, when that would happen, when you would look at that for elected officials. And also perhaps establish a procedure for how you implement the salary of a new elected official in the county, when that would happen. So what we've done, we've-- I've submitted to you a copy of the proposed changes that we would use for both the long-range planning process and for the budget submission process. And you'll notice that the first changes that we did incorporate was that we wanted the department heads to use and submit their responses to the Long Range Plan questionnaire, which is a fairly standardized document that looks at a number of things in a standardized format. Now, I've already met with department heads and have shared that with them and distributed that. And again, the only-- there's really no changes in that document, except for one minor thing that I will show you. But it's just a standardized format for the department heads to submit their long-range plan information, so that when you're reviewing it, there's some consistency and you know where to look for each and every department. The only other change in this particular section as well is that, again, one of the things that we do with this information in our early budget estimates in early May is when we present the long-range plan and our early revenue estimates to you, so that you can start preparing for your budget hearings. And one of the things that we inserted in this section was simply saying that information presented during this presentation is that you may use that information to direct how budgets may be submitted by the department heads within the parameters of the county's current financial situation. So that it just gives you an earlier head start on how and what we are seeing financially before departments submit budgets. We've done that routinely through a number of years. Now we're just putting it in as part of the procedures. When we look at the annual budget process, one of the main changes-- again, I'll just walk you through it. Again, we wanted to do the preliminary revenue estimates that we do for the budget. We want to do that by April 1. And now this year, I know the auditor's office is in fact working on those estimates already. And again, we want to stress, those are preliminary projections as we go this. But typically, we may not start this process in years past till sometime in May. So we're starting at about a month early gathering our revenue estimates. The other change that you talked about is the redoing the outside agency application. This was also something that we would normally send out in May, but to prep for an earlier time, it would be our intent to send these applications out in early April, so we could see what kind of requests we were going to get from the multitude of agencies that we fund. And then the rest of the changes in this section are really-- we're just simply saying by May 1, we are going to start distributing information to the department heads, which is also current practice and procedure. We're just doing some simple clarifications in this area. The one thing we are working on with IT in this area, right now, departments, when they submit their budget forms, and that they may-- it requires the auditor's office to do a lot of manual entry into the numbers that are submitted by the department heads to the auditor's office. So the auditor's office goes through a tremendous amount of work, you know, taking those notes from those department heads and separately entering all those annotations to those department budgets. As you know, we've rolled out for you in the past a department head menu, where department heads can look at their past expenditures for all their ASNs. And the IT department is working on a program right now, which will allow department heads, when they submit their budget, to do it electronically and submit that to the auditor's office. And we can avoid all of that manual entry that's required by the auditor's office right now. Should be a huge time saver. We hope-- IT hopes to show the department heads that new format and that new procedure here in about mid-April. And that so, that's, I think, a very productive change that's coming down the pipe. That'll make it a lot easier for department heads and definitely much easier for the auditor's office when they get all our budget numbers from us all at once. The only other change to the current policy, and we added it right at the very end, is how you take a look at salaries and when you take a look at salaries for the elected officials. And again, I stress because elected officials don't get a step increase. And so we wanted to formulate the time and what items would be considered when you make adjustments to the flat rate of salary for our elected officials. One thing I also wanted to point out, and it's consistent with state law, is that under no circumstances may you adjust the salary of an elected department head during the term of their office or consecutive terms of office. You can't lower their salaries once it's been established. The other part of the policy, and I know this was of big interest to the commission, is how do you set the salary for a newly-elected official? And under this proposal is that the commission may adopt the salary for that newly-elected official based upon, you know, the recognition that it may take a while to get up to speed and that to have them become fully proficient in the job, that you may start them up at a 10% less than the established flat rate for that position. But if you do that, there is a process, is that every year, they're adjusted by 2.5% until they get to that flat rate that's established for the elected official. So that's the major change in that in our review. Now, consistent with that, I just wanted to show you a couple of different things. This is a copy of the Long Range questionnaire form that we did develop. You'll notice that it does talk about all of the things that are already in the Long Range Plan document. We're just simply, for consistency purposes, want everybody to submit their information the same, so that you can review it much, much easier, and we can certainly do our totals and tallies much easier, too. This is on an Excel spreadsheet. The only difference-- oops, I wanted to switch. The only difference that we wanted to put on this form that some people have talked about is on Part F, where it talks about units of service. That was one of the big things that the commission wanted to look at last year, is for the departments to tell you, what are their units of service? And in fact, they may vary from year to year. But it gives you a kind of an idea of what the department's involved with and what they see as increases in some of their critical areas. Now, for instance, in equalization, that unit of service may be the number of building permits that they did. It might be the number of properties that are-- that they're responsible to assess. And that for the register of deeds, it may be the number of documents filed for the treasurer's office. It may be the number of license plates issued, et cetera. And so what we've asked is for each department to identify what are their core units of service and describe them, you know, so that you have an understanding of what those are, and then to make those projections, so that you have an idea of, you know, where their challenges and get a better understanding of their particular department. So that's really the only change that we've asked when people submit the Long Range Plan. On the outside agency application for funding, one of the things we did is we actually added a separate page, so that everybody's using the same format when they submit their revenue requests, so that we can see where are they getting their money. You know, not only from the county, is it from the city, United Way, grants, special fundraisers, et cetera. And we also asked them to list their budgeted expenditures for the past few years and what they're requesting. And you can see the breakdown that we came up with, which we think is fairly comprehensive and should catch almost all of the expense requests that would be out there. So again, we wanted to provide some consistency here. One of the things that we're doing here is what we're no longer requiring because of our advent of using the iPads and things like that for your-- we're not requesting multiple copies of things from people. And that so, you submit it once, we have it, it's easily disseminated. And so those are really the only major changes that we've implemented. And again, these were based on your discussions last year during budget hearings. The one thing I want to reiterate, you know, we did go ahead because of time constraints and asked department heads to start using at least the Long Range Plan format for consistency purposes. And that but the rest of this, it would be our intent, just we wanted to brief you on what we're proposing and kind of the direction that we're going. We're not asking you to adopt today. This is just simply a briefing. And if you would like to incorporate any of these changes, so that we can put it in the Policies and Procedures manual, we'd look at that for next week. So at this juncture, yeah, I'd be happy to stand by for any questions, but I hope that we met your expectations that you expressed last year.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I support everything that you wrote down, Ken, but I will not support the withholding of money from elected individuals at Minnehaw County. You know, if you're the sheriff or the state's attorney, and you're running for that position, and you're going to start off at 90% of what the position was, and then the next year you'll get 92.5, the next year 95, the next year after that 97. At the end of four years, I did the quick math, from the first year, we're basically withholding close to 25%. Well, it is 25% if you add it up. And I have a huge issue with that, because when we hire a department head, we don't sit there and tell those people, you're going to have to take a 10% pay cut. We don't do that. We have a completely different system, and it's not consistent across the board. And so I have a huge issue with the idea of, just because you run an election, you get elected, somehow you should tithe and lose your income for the sole purpose, when if I'm an unelected department head, we don't make those people take the position with a 10% pay cut to grow into it. That just, to me, seems arbitrary and capricious. When people get state jobs or city jobs, they don't get their money withheld from them for the established pay. It's very regressive, and I don't support it.
May I respond to that?
Certainly.
In a way, you kind of do. And that because for-- and I'll just take myself for example. I'm on a step and grade plan. And that step and grade plan, I move up that chain, you know, if I have good job performance, but there's a natural progression there, and that because of the step and because of my years of service. It's highly likely that when I retire-- when I retire, that when you go looking for someone, you are going to bring that department head at a lower level, you know, maybe a lower step than what I'm currently at. So they will start, more than likely, at a lower salary. Now, you have the ability to, of course, hire them up to, I think, step four, you know, in the hiring process, but you do bring-- highly likely, and by practice, we do bring them at a lower level. With elected officials not being on that step and grade plan, and that there's not that ability. And so with this proposal, at least-- and it doesn't say you have to, but you may review this, and you may bring them in at a lower level, consistent with what you have to do with other new, you know, non-elected department heads who are new to the position. But because they're not on a step, there is a procedure to bring them up to speed quickly. And that's all they were attempting to do here, is to recognize that inequity, that right now, there is no way for an elected official to move like that.
Except-- may I ask a question?
Certainly.
But if we review those salaries and look at what the market is bearing, we make those adjustments. And we've done that before, where we've increased people's salaries. So I guess I understand your position, but I still say that people need to know how much the position is that they're running for.
And this says that when we are doing-- when you have a position that's going to be a newly-elected position, that's exactly what you have to do. And you have to review it, and you have to make that determination then, whether or not you're going to adopt this or not. You certainly still have the latitude to say, nope, we're doing it, but this is an option. To recognize that folks coming in, or, you know, depending on the-- if you get a whole flux of new people, may not understand the complexities of the position. It just gives you that ability.
I'm sorry, Ken, you haven't sold me. I understand your position, but I'm just reluctant.
I'm just trying to tell you what the policy was intended to do. And quite frankly, the recommendation for this is just-- has bubbled up from discussions that have come from this table. That's how the policy was developed.
I understand, but may I just-- when I buy a candy bar and I expect to get a full-size Snickers bar, and I get the wrapper and I open it up and it's a fun-sized bar, there's nothing fair about that. So anyway, that's just my own perspicacy.
I think if you use the analogy of a bag of nuts rather than a candy bar, everybody would kind of understand this group right up here. Commissioner Kelly?
I respectfully disagree with my colleague. I want to commend you on this. This is my fifth budget year going in, and this is by far going to be much more understanding and complete for the commission. And I imagine you and the auditor's office put this all together, and I really want to commend you on it. I think it's great. Just take the thing--
And again--
Take it and don't argue it.
We are not asking for approval today. We're not--
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
It's difficult to build up a lot of enthusiasm for budgets. But I would say that I like that section on the full-time elected officials. You know, when we hire a replacement for Ken, I doubt if we will hire them at step one of his grade, but we won't hire them at the same step that Ken is at. And, you know, when we hire department heads, we hire qualified people. When we elect them, that's not necessarily true. I'm not saying that about you, Ken, but--
We could be living proof.
We don't know. I could wind up being, you know, go to law school and be elected county attorney and, you know, without any experience, and that would be a travesty. It won't be me, but I think that elected department heads, you know, sometimes don't come in with the experience that we would hire a highway superintendent.
Somehow, I don't think that came out like you wanted it.
Any other comments that are inappropriate?
And again, I just would like to stress, I mean, this was simply developed by what has bubbled up from the table. I mean, we've shared this with the elected officials, you know, we've gotten some comment back, which we've tried to incorporate into this. And that-- but again, I mean, I certainly respect Commissioner Pecus's viewpoint, and that-- but again, we brought this up, and that based on the conversation of what we've heard. And that's why, you know, we're briefing you today, something to think about, and it's certainly subject to either rejection or amendment or whatever, when you perhaps look at it next week. You know, again, certain things-- and I think this is really the guts of what your debate will be-- certain things, I think you can-- of the other parts of the policy, like the standardized format that we're trying to do for the Long Range Plan, and moving the revenue estimate dates, and the new forms that we've created for the outside agency application. Those are things that I think are really more administrative in nature, and, you know, we're doing it to assist you in the budget process. So some of those things, like the Long Range Plan document, we've already put that out and are kind of moving towards that already. Same with doing the-- a new format for department heads to submit their budgets electronically, so that we avoid an extremely time-consuming process of trying to download all that information, each and every entry by hand. So I think I-- my hat's off to IT for really coming up with a good solution on that, so.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Ken, thank you for all your work in this. And to Darlene and Rich, we appreciate all your support. I think sometimes we need to take a before picture of the budget. your support. I think sometimes we need to take a before picture of the budget, and you, and then look, an after picture, to see if there's any major changes, because they are a huge support to what we do, and I do thank IT for bringing up all of this information electronically rather than manually, if you will, and it also gives us comparative documentation, which is extremely important. Any other changes that were made, I appreciate it, from the departments there?
And I don't know if there's any department heads, or, or anybody else here that has any comments that they
Pam's here.
Didn't mean you, Pam.
I might say that I think you created this problem when we, and we had this debate when we did the comp, salary compensation study, and at that point, elected officials didn't support being taken off the step increase. I agree with John, in that I think that the statute does say what people are supposed to start out. I think people will run for that job, do it, I didn't even know what I got paid, so it wasn't my only decision, but I also, I guess I don't know this, but how does it deal with county commissioners? So surely, a first-year county commissioner isn't as valuable as one who's been here 20 years? Well, I do believe that there is a learning curve for just about any kind of job, but I don't necessarily think that they intended for you to decide what the, on a, otherwise, you're kind of stuck in that rut. You never get any increase unless the county commissioners feel like they want to give you one. And, you know, it's possible that county commissioners may not like you personally, and then they may decide that you shouldn't have any kind of an increase. And I think that that's sort of arbitrary and capricious. So, I think that everything said, I think that we should allow people to have steps, and I think the statute says what elected officials are supposed to get paid. But that in mind, even for yourselves, first year, first week, not the same as 20 years. For example, I've been on a school board, served in the legislature, served as a public utilities commission. I have sort of a huge breadth of seeing government at many different levels. I think even in terms of the market, when you look at hiring a department head, it's still affected by what the market will bear, and I would like to think that maybe we replace Ken for somebody cheaper, but chances are, you probably won't, because sometimes you get what you pay for. And I'm sure you're going to be looking for somebody more experienced than some beginning person. So, I just thought I'd share with you my concerns. I'm happy to live with whatever you decide.
Thank you, Pam.
Mr. Man, Pam, can I ask you a question?
I think Mr. Kelly was first. Thank you. Sorry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe statute says the minimum you pay an elected official. I think we can pay, and we do pay, much more than the statute allows.
Yeah, you can. But I think that should, I don't know. No, you know what I think, so.
Yep, thank you, Pam.
I guess I have a quick question.
Commissioner Pecus?
You know, Pam, we have elected department heads that have been here for quite some time, but if in your first term, the first year, your pay was withheld 10%, and then the second year it was 7.5, the third was 5%, the last was 2.5, the way it was drawn up. If you look at that, and then you're re-elected, and you get the full amount, years down the road, if you find out another elected department head didn't have that imposed, would that give you a chip on your shoulder?
Probably.
I agree.
The other point is here, though, that I think that, I think, I admit that there is a learning curve, but I also think that the public decides whether or not you
I agree.
They are the people that we allow to decide on your job performance, one way or the other. He didn't say that you five should decide this, they said that the public at large should decide this.
Yep.
And I guess if they think I did a poor job, they have an opportunity in four years to get rid of me. And I think I have to run on my record, if it was good, it was good, and if it was bad, they'll also notice that. Because generally speaking, I think people do take note, so.
Other comments?
With her breadth of experience, maybe she'd like Ken's job.
Again, this was just a briefing, if you will, so there's no decisions that will be made today. Without the conversation about the pay increases, I think the rest of it is a step in the right direction in providing information to all of us to make good decisions, and I appreciate the staff's work in making that happen. And Darlene and Rich, we do appreciate your support. You guys are awesome to deal with, and you do a lot of work for us, so thank you. Other comments? Otherwise, we'll go to the Commissioner liaison reports. Commissioner Barth?
I actually want to make a comment on a number of items, so. I just recently got back from the spring workshop out in Pierre, as did Commissioner Hyber, and I, there are a few things I'd just like to touch on. We had Larry Zimmerman from the Veterans, State Veterans Department, talking about veterans' courts, which are possibly coming our way. Talked about the Veterans Home in Hot Springs, which looks like a nice facility. One thing they talked about was getting a list of all the veterans in the state, which the state does not have. And, of course, many are passing away from earlier conflicts, but more are being created all the time. We had a presentation on emergency operations, and one of the things they commented on was not to go outside the chain of command on, on spending, because you might get stuck with the bills. They said, for example, if you need a thousand road closed signs, and, you know, if the proper way is to go through the emergency operation person, but if you happen to know the governor and call him separately, and you wind up with 2,000 road closed signs, you're going to get the bill, and FEMA and stuff like that won't reimburse. We had Dean Dayton from the Legislative Audit people gave his final thing to us. He's retiring. And one thing he commented on was that while there's a limit to the reserves that we can have, we can also have fund for a specific building project, and thus exceed the reserve limitation. So we would be able to save up, you know, $500,000 for a project that we anticipated building in a couple of years. Finally, Deb Bowman talked to us about Medicaid expansion for the state, and for the state to fully take on the burden that's been suggested, it would cost $37 million. And while, I think the argument was that while that would save individual counties possibly, you know, millions, it probably wouldn't save $37 million for the 64 counties across the state. And so, at this point, they're not going to do it. And basically, that's it. Cindy, do you have any?
I'm going to make a comment.
Absolutely.
I think they said for every 1% increase in change, it was going to cost an additional $7 million, and the people that would be covered under the Medicaid were the people that, it would just increase with people who were able-bodied and not covered by insurance, and adults. No, children have all been covered, adult, senior citizens have all been covered. So the ones that would be covered under the additional $37 million are the people who don't have insurance but are able-bodied, and in most cases, working.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, just a couple. In detox, the team is coming in Wednesday. Is that correct, Ken? Nope?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll probably know Thursday whether or not we're going to get accreditation. They've been working hard. Carol's been working hard with, with a representative of the state and representative of CCS, so I don't know. We went through the other day, and looked to me like we're pretty much on track. All we have to do is be following the rules when they come in to inspect, or to audit. Emergency management, they assisted in that Baltic fire, which was a pretty good-sized fire, and I think you all got a thing on the drowning and the resources we committed there, and they were substantial. So, that's the end.
My only comment is dealing with auditors for 20-some years plus, you never know what an auditor is going to say until you get it in writing. So we'll wait and see what happens in this process. And obviously, they have their own due diligence to perform that we're not involved with, so they look at it as an independent, neutral agency. So we'll look forward to that conversation. I will suggest, suggest that, I did get a letter from the SOTC, the Association of County Commissioners, asking for a commissioner or its designee from the county to attend Veterans and Military Affairs Committee. So, Commissioner Hyber?
I was going to bring it up under new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I would just suggest that we put it on the agenda for next week, and I would suggest that we consider Pat Krupa, who works with the Veterans Affairs in her Human Services, and I think she's the most knowledgeable person that we're going to have in the county, so.
I think that's a great suggestion. I think if you wouldn't mind talking to her about that, or I can either one, but we will put it on next week's agenda, if that's okay. But I think she would be an awesome designee from Minnehaw County. Any other liaison reports? I apologize for interrupting yours. If not, any new business?
The tax man coming.
I have that song on my iPad.
Just more of a briefing memo, and you will receive a more detailed and informative memo for the Boards of Equalization. I know everyone looks forward to those. They do start April 9th. We are this week receiving any objections or appeals to the County Board of Equalization. Last week, we're all of the local boards throughout the entire county, in the city of Sioux Falls, for, if you read in the paper, about three and a half days. I think they enjoyed themselves this year, contrary to what was brought up. We have a very, it's unique, a very low number of appeals, whether to the city, or to any of the township boards, or to any of the city boards. Good thing, bad thing, we never expect. We never really know what to do, so we follow suit with this. We expect a very slow board for the county, very few owner-occupied appeals at night. As current as of today, we only have three. We don't know what we did right or did wrong, but we're going to find out.
Three?
Three.
Total?
Total. So
Speaks well of our equalization director.
Like I say, I wished I knew what we did. I'd like to copycat it.
Yeah.
Can we just deny him today?
There are only two, as we speak today, only two properties we are bringing forward to the Board on exempts, which will be the night after your normal board is done. So it, I hate to say it's going to be a light board, but it looks like, which is
That's better than calling us a slow board, or a heavy board.
Oh, boy, I walked into that one with both eyes open.
That is unbelievable.
It, we don't know what we did right or didn't do, but we're going to do the same thing next year.
That's awesome.
So, I think that was really all. You'll get a more detailed briefing memo of the numbers and what it entails. They have until Friday at 5:00 to appeal, so.
Right.
We'll get that done now, too.
How many did we have last year, for comparative purposes?
Last year, in totality, in the county, there were 1,400 appeals. There were quite a few of those that we didn't appeal to the county.
Right.
This year, as of this morning, we only have 205.
Wow. It's amazing.
It, yes, it is. And that, I, like I say, I wish we knew what we did, so we could repeat it.
We'll give you credit for that, right now.
Thank you. I, yeah, I'm not going to turn it down, but don't ask me to repeat it, because we don't know what we did. It's just not, we've gotten things equalized, and I think more public information has gone out as to what, where, when, and why.
Well, thank you for, even if you can't define it, we're glad that that's the result.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's a good staff down there. I just take credit for it.
That's good, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any old business? If not, we need to adjourn into executive session for a legal briefing and pending litigation. Correct to do so?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn into a legal briefing and pending litigation. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
Peter, can I see?